It's not my friend.
I know. I have a problem.
Hello, hello, any audio? Hello, hello, uh, hello, 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 hello. Okay.
Absolutely they can.
Yeah, that I don't, I don't do fasting very well because I'm a three square mill person.
I like to eat. This fasting thing I like.
Good evening. I call to order this meeting of the Cowee County Board of Education, Agenda 783. Today is Tuesday, January the 10th, 2023. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
(Inaudible) And the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Recognitions, Dr. Horton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I'll call on Judge Kerry Markham to come and handle swearing-in of our board members.
Will you repeat after me? I, Rob DeBose.
I, Rob DeBose.
As citizen of the state of Georgia.
A citizen of the state of Georgia.
And an employee of Cowee de County.
Employee of the Cowee de County.
And the recipient of public funds.
And the recipient of public funds.
For services rendered.
For services rendered.
As such employee.
As such employee.
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of Georgia.
And the Constitution of Georgia.
I do further solemnly swear and affirm.
I do further solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will truly and faithfully.
That I will truly and faithfully.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Required of me.
Required of me.
By law.
By law.
As a member.
As a member.
Of the Board of Education.
The Board of Education.
Of Cowee de County.
Of Cowee de County.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I do further swear or affirm.
I do further swear and affirm.
That I am not the holder.
That I'm not the holder.
Of any unaccounted.
Of any unaccounted.
For public money.
For public money.
Do this state.
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivisions.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
That I am not the holder.
That I'm not the holder.
Of any office of trust.
Of any office of trust.
Under the government of the United States.
Under the government of the United States.
Nor of either of the several states.
Nor either of the several states.
Nor of any foreign states.
Nor of any foreign state.
That I am otherwise qualified.
That I'm otherwise qualified.
To hold said office.
To hold said office.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of Georgia.
And laws of Georgia.
And that I will support.
And that I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And that I have met.
And that I've met.
The residency requirements.
The residency requirements.
Of this office.
Of this office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
One more.
I, Rob DeBose.
I, Rob DeBose.
Citizen of the state of Georgia.
A citizen of the state of Georgia.
And being an employee of Cowee de County.
And being an employee of the Cowee de County.
And the recipient of public funds.
And the recipient of public funds.
For services rendered.
For services rendered.
As such employee.
As such employee.
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of Georgia.
And the Constitution of Georgia.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
I, Lady Roberts. A citizen of the state of Georgia.
A citizen of the state of Georgia.
And being an employee of Cowee de County.
And being an employee of Cowee de County.
And the recipient of public funds.
And the recipient of public funds.
For services rendered as such employee.
For services rendered as such employee.
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of Georgia.
And the Constitution of Georgia.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will well and truly.
That I will well and truly.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Required of me.
Required of me.
By law.
By law.
As a member of the Board of Education.
As a member of the Board of Education.
Of Cowee de County.
Of Cowee de County.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I do further swear or affirm.
I do further swear or affirm.
That I'm not the holder.
That I'm not the holder.
Of any unaccounted for.
Of any unaccounted. Of any unaccounted for.
Public money do this state.
Public money do this state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
That I am not the holder.
That I'm not the holder.
Of any office of trust.
Of any office of trust.
Under the government of the United States.
Under the government of the United States.
Nor of either of the several states.
Nor of either of the several states.
Nor of any foreign state.
Nor of any foreign state.
And that I am otherwise qualified.
And that I am otherwise qualified.
To hold said office.
To hold said office.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of Georgia.
And laws of Georgia.
And that I will support.
And I will support.
The Constitutions of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And that I have met.
And that I have met.
The residency requirements.
The residency requirements.
Of this office.
Of this office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Amy DeBose.
A citizen of the state of Georgia.
A citizen of the state of Georgia.
And being an employee of Cowee County.
Being an employee of Cowee County.
And the recipient of public funds.
And the recipient of public funds.
For services rendered as such employee.
For services rendered as such employee.
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of Georgia.
And the Constitution of Georgia.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I'll call on Public Information Officer Dean Jackson to bring us our core business. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Horton, board members. We only have one recognition for this new year, or this first meeting of the new year, and that is our core business from Lee Middle School. We have a number of students and teachers, and I will call on Principal Jamal Kemp to come down and to introduce our guest tonight and our lesson.
Good evening, Dr. Horton, Dr. Guy, and all the board members. I'm Jamal, Dr. Jamal Kemp, principal of Lee Middle School. At Lee, we recognize the five-year Cowee County School System Strategic Plan emphasizes and measures a learning culture that develops and promotes college and career-ready students who are creative, innovative, and collaborative problem solvers. We at Lee Middle School have identified social and emotional learning as a point of emphasis in our school improvement plan for the 2022-2023 school year. As part of the focus in this area, we are fostering a supportive learning environment in the art classroom. Ms. Singleton, our education art teacher, is here with four of her students this evening to share one example of the work that is being produced by the students to help us accomplish our goal.
Hello, my name is Chrissy Singleton. I'm the art teacher at Lee Middle School. Recognizing the importance of students being able to develop fluency in visual communication and art for eighth grade, we are focusing on producing art for the competition at the local, regional, state, and national levels this year. In order to master one of our standards in VAAC Point 2, which deals with making connections from other disciplines to enhance the understanding of art production, I have provided the following learning activity for my students. The month of October is Bullying Awareness Month. Family Patterns Matter is an organization that sponsors a local art competition that hopes to raise awareness of how bullying affects the lives of our students. To incorporate this topic into a lesson, I designed a project that dealt with looking at bullying from a youth's point of view, which involved a class discussion of the physical, the emotional, and social effects bullying can have on an individual. I asked my students, "Do you know someone that has been bullied? Have you ever been a bully to someone else?" Some students had stories to share, others sat and internalized what was being said. I gave the students the opportunity to brainstorm and create preliminary drawings. Once the students formulated their ideas into a composition, they had to execute their design as per the requirements for the competition. Students were allowed to choose their media. All artwork had to be completed within two weeks. The goal of this project was to achieve meaningful works of art that captured strong visual illustrations of the effects of bullying. My students made a connection from the lesson to real life through being part of a movement to bring awareness during a month that targets this challenge within our schools. Our mission at Lee is to learn, motivate, and serve. I strive to find ways to reinforce this mission in my classroom every day. Students are given the opportunity to learn the fundamentals of the visual arts through exploration, problem-solving, creative thinking, production, which is, of course, at the heart of art education. Students are motivated and empowered to participate in competitions at all levels to build self-esteem and confidence as young developing artists. Students show stewardship of service to our family. When called upon to assist with artwork to celebrate special events such as Veterans Day Multicultural Program and the eighth-grade dance, to name a few. We seize every opportunity to advocate for the visual arts and promote the talent that exists in our students. This project achieves supporting our mission. It enables students to learn better ways to communicate with each other, encourage students to serve the needs of our community in helping to eliminate the problem in our social circles. It is my pleasure for you to hear from a few of my students here with me tonight.
Hello, my name is Anna Claire Burris, and I'm in the eighth grade at Lee Middle School. In Ms. Singleton's class, we are asked to apply ourselves each day by coming to class prepared and having the mindset of utilizing our time for productivity. The thing I like most about this class is Ms. Singleton gives us the freedom to explore and create art from our personal perspective. I know that my art will be unique and different from everyone else's. She always tells us, "Make it yours." This activity taught me how to use my artistic skills and creativity for having a voice against bullying. I feel like I developed a better understanding about the impact bullying has on students, some that I call friends. I created a work of art that shows a person's individual strength. I included the words "I'm still standing" to represent a person that refuses to be broken or confused about their identity, a person that is as strong and as solid as the brick wall that is painted in the background. The puzzle pieces on the floor represent my friends and peers that are all struggling to fit into the right place. The snow in the background represents the frigidness of how cold and uncaring others can be when they really don't know anything about who you are or what you represent. This activity taught me how this subject connects to the real world by understanding that an artist can use their talent to have a voice in dealing with social issues. Not only did I want to produce a work of art showing my artistic skills, but I also wanted to project a positive message about a person being resilient and overcoming times of being bullied. My future goals include making good grades as I begin my ninth-grade year in high school, look for opportunities that will change me academically, and begin my journey for learning how to best use my skill set for a future career.
Hello, my name is Scarlett Ilson, and I'm in the eighth grade at Lee Middle School. In Ms. Singleton's class, we are asked to apply ourselves each day by taking the challenge of discovering something new. The thing that I like most about this class is that it gives me a place to be surrounded by other kids that like art as much as I do. I love to draw, and I spend a lot of time using my artistic skills. My teacher is always willing to sit down with me and share how to get better. This activity taught me that it's okay to push the boundaries of expressing emotion and meaning in a work of art. I created a watercolor painting reflecting the emotional impact of being singled out. The female figure is sliding back tears while others point and call names. She feels as if she is being physically attacked, but they're only words, words that hurt. She stands with her arms wrapped around her for protection against these demons with loose tongues. I wasn't sure how successful I would be using watercolor, but I think that I made a very bold statement. This activity taught me how this subject connects to the real world by allowing me to use my love of drawing to create and communicate a message about bullying. I think the female figure brings strong emotion to this painting and represents a brave young woman. My future goals include being the best student that I can be, look for ways to use my artistic skills to improve as I get older, and look forward to furthering my education.
Hello, my name is Emily Harris, and I'm in the eighth grade at Lee Middle School. In Ms. Singleton's class, we are asked to apply ourselves each day by working on developing a strong work ethic. My mom is an artist, and I see how hard she works to improve her craft, so I know this will be important for my future. The thing that I like most about this class is being with my creative friends that enjoy art simply for expressing what we love to do. When this lesson was shared with us, I couldn't wait to start putting pencil to paper. I wanted to show what isolation looked like from a kid's perspective. In my painting, I wanted the viewer to feel isolated and sad. There is no one to talk to, but sometimes that's a good thing. My figure just wants to be left alone and have some time to let go of the sum of the pain she's feeling, caving bottles inside. She doesn't want the embarrassment of being around others when she's at a low point during the school day. Bullies, they're all around us. They look at you a certain way, speak a simple word, and can destroy any chance of it making it a good day. This activity taught me how this subject connects to the real world by having an open conversation about how people's actions impact others. Art is a powerful tool that can bring awareness to our problems in society. I hope I can use my artistic skills during my lifetime to make a difference. My future goals include working on my art so that I can visually see growth and development in my skills and explore the opportunities that competitions can offer. I'm sure high school will have open doors as well, so I can't wait to see what lies ahead.
Hello, my name is Melo Zachary, and I'm in the eighth grade at Lee Middle School. In Ms. Singleton's class, we are asked to apply ourselves each day by doing our best. Our motto is, "You don't have to be your best to do your best." The thing I like most about this class is that I get to experience being in a class where I can learn a skill by being shown to do the skill and given the time to improve the skill taught. Our class is always working on projects that require versatility and adapting to specific requirements. Since I've been in art, we as a collective group produce artwork that is used for specific functions throughout the school year. Aside from producing art for competitions, we have painted stencil logos of Timberwolves for the remodeling of our school gym, created illustrated posters for Veterans Day, created Faberge Eggs for the Georgia State Board of Education Christmas tree. We will be working this semester towards backdrops for the multicultural program in February and the eighth-grade dance in May. Being in art class teaches me on a daily basis that art strongly impacts the environment we live in. We are showing support and serving our school and community by sharing our time and talent with others. One could say that we make a difference by making the ordinary extraordinary. I like knowing that I have a small part in making a big difference at Lee Middle School. My future goals include finishing my middle school years, feeling prepared for what's next. I'm not sure about careers yet, but I look forward to exploring my options.
And Dr. Horton, before we close, on behalf of Lee Middle School and the art department, we would want to thank you all for all you do for the Cowee County School System and our community, and we have a small token of our appreciation. You all should have bags underneath your table. Our students have made artwork for you guys.
Dr. Horton, I would like to just add, what an outstanding group of talented young artists. I was amazed staring at the artwork that you had done. Your teacher was allowing us to see that while you spoke. Outstanding job.
Dr. Kemp, Ms. Singleton, thank you for what you do every day as students. I just want you to know, I am envious of the talent you have. It's coming from a guy that can't draw anything, can't paint anything. That is amazing work. That is amazing work. You should be very proud.
All right, thank you. All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
They're moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
Madam Chair, the first item that we have on the agenda tonight is the election of officers for 2023. It's customary that every January that the board will elect its officers for the coming year. So with that, I will open the floor for a nomination for... We can do them separate positions, or we can go with a slate. I'll leave that up to the wishes of the board. But with that, I'll open up the floor.
Madam Chair and Dr. Horton, I would like to slate these officers if that is acceptable of the board. I would like to nominate Andrew Copeland, Chairman; Buzz Glover, Vice Chairman; Rob DeBose, Treasurer of the Board.
Any other nominations? With that, we'll need a motion to close nominations.
Move to close the nominations.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor on the motion to close nominations? Seven to zero. And at this time, we'll need a motion to accept the slate of officers.
Make a motion to accept the slate of officers?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven to zero, Ms. Pat. And before we transition, Mr. Copeland here, I do want to take a moment, if I may, board members. Madam Chair, and I hope I don't call you Madam Chair by habit. I've had two Madam Chairs, and I'm going to a Mr. Chair. Madam Chair, you became chairman of this board at a very challenging time. 2021 and 2022 have been full of challenges, those posed by Mother Nature and those posed otherwise. And you have been steadfast in your leadership, your support of this system, your support of me and the work that we do each day. And I just want you to know that I greatly appreciate it, and we got a little something for you. All right, yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of December 13th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any of you abstaining? Yep, so motion carries six to... Six with one abstention. All right, action items, group one, Dr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first action item I have for you in group one is to adopt Robert's Rules of Order, the newly revised 11th edition. The board shall determine at its January meeting the specific revision and addition of Robert's Rules of Order to be used for the calendar year per its policy. So with that, I recommend approval of Robert's Rules of Order, the newly revised 11th edition.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
Next action item I have for you in group one is to approve board member attendance at GSBA mandated training. We made this move to approve training for board members at the January meeting several years ago. By doing this, board members can attend training online or in person without having to get board approval each time. Approved training is required by law for each board member. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
The next action item I have for you in group one is to approve an allowance adjustment request to remove the BP2 dirt stockpile from the BP3 site to the excess dirt site across...
across Armory Road. Approval was requested for an allowance adjustment to cover the cost of moving unused soil from the BP2 stockpile. Per the contract drawings, the grading contractor on BP2 moved the soil from the BP2 site to the BP3 site due to space constraints. A portion of this stockpiled soil was used to backfill the foundation walls on the gymnasium. Removal of the unused portion of the stockpile was not included in the scope of work because the quantity could not be calculated at the time that the BP3 package was bid. Funds were included in the site work allowance to cover the cost of removing the excess soil. The cost to move this material to the site across Armory Road is $142,014.60. The allowance adjustment proposal and supporting documentation is attached. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries, oh, seven to zero. I've not been voting. I'm in favor of everything. Yeah, I know. I vote in favor of everything.
The next action item I have for you in group one is to approve a contingency change request to add trees to the excess dirt site across Armory Road. Approval was requested for a contingency change request to cover the cost of adding trees at the excess dirt site east of Armory Road. The proposal includes all labor and materials to install trees, mulch, and temporary irrigation. Total proposal cost is $109,000. The contingency change request and supporting documentation is attached. Board members, I will mention to you, I was out there today and the elevation is being raised slowly but surely. We're dodging some weather, some wet weather out there, but that elevation is beginning to be raised. Once we add these trees, I think it's going to make a really big difference. That area, you know, used to, we had a big hole there, a big ravine, and we're going to raise that up. I think we have approximately 300 trees that we're going to be able to plant to try to bring that tree canopy back as quickly as possible. So it's going to be a very welcome change. So with that, Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Chairman, I do have just a quick comment. Just want to thank Mr. Cheek and all of those involved in trying to beautify this site, if you will. Certainly like being good neighbors of those around Noonan High School since it is in a neighborhood and appreciate all that effort and own down to the landscapers that'll be doing the work. I think it's a great improvement. Thank you.
I want to add one more thing. We were out there today and it's unbelievable the amount of dirt that is being moved every day out there. I forget the exact number of loads that they told us that they were moving, but it's an unbelievable amount of dirt. You can see the subdivision very well from across that area there. And I know that the people, the residents and our neighbors there will truly appreciate those trees once they begin to grow. And not only would it provide a buffer from seeing a lot of the school activities and the lights, it'll prove as a, it'll provide some sound barrier as well, so.
And I believe it was, what, 150 when students are there and two something, like 213, I think, when students aren't there?
Yeah, the construction superintendent this afternoon told us approximately 150 loads a day when students are present. And then when students aren't on campus, we're up to almost, I think, 260 approximately. And guys, that's a lot of dirt.
That's a lot of dirt.
That's a lot of dirt. And the guys out there are doing a great job. Like I say, they're dodging weather, but the project, that portion of the project is coming along very nicely.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion cap passes seven to zero.
The last action item I have for you in group one is to approve the purchase of equipment safes for school resource officers. Approval was requested to purchase safes from Southside Safin Vault for use by school resource officers. If approved, the safes will be installed in each school resource officer's office. Price to purchase 35 safes is $81,655. Supporting documentation is attached. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. There are no action items in group two, so on to group three, trips.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'll call on Dr. Mark Guy to bring you trips. Dr. Guy.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. The principal of Northgate High School requests permission for the varsity and the junior varsity soccer teams to travel to Birmingham, Alabama on February 17th and 18th, 2023, to participate in a soccer tournament. No school days will be missed and there is no cost to the school system. The principal of East Coweta High School requests permission for the rifle team to participate in the United States Marine Corps Service JROTC Championships in Anniston, Alabama on February 2nd through the 4th, 2023. And students will miss two days of school and there is no cost to the school system. Mr. Superintendent, these do meet our out-of-state field trip guidelines.
Thank you, Dr. Guy. And with that, Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. Is there, for both of these trips to be approved, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'll call on Mr. Keith Chapman. He's gonna, we've loaded him up tonight. He's gonna bring you budget, sales tax, audit report, and a tentative budget calendar. Mr. Chapman.
Budget report. We've completed 50% of the year, expended 49.01% of the budget. Currently, we're $14,219 under budget for six months. Sales tax, still see good growth there. Collections were a little over $3.2 million. Year-over-year increase is 13.29%. I'll yield to Miller Edwards. He's partnered with Malden Jenkins. They've conducted our audit for the last several years and he'll give you some information on our latest audit.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
Well, hello. How are you all doing? Go Dogs, right? No? Okay. Appreciate you all having me here tonight. As Keith just said, we completed your audit back in December and issued it. It went to the state as required. Everything went very well. But I'm in your shoes and I want to just kind of know the highlights. I'm not going to assume that you're an accountant that likes to look at all these numbers and I can see somebody shaking their head in agreement with what I'm saying. Your audit went very well. All the reports we've issued are what I would call clean. There are no findings. There is no management points. There's no issues that we feel like we need to bring to your attention today. We do believe your financial report that is presented to you all does present fairly in all material respects, your financial condition, your results of operation, and all those kind of things. So on the surface, that's what you want to hear from me, is that everything is good. I've got a good, clean report for you. When looking at the numbers, I'm going to give you just a few highlights and a few things that I would just recommend to people in your shoes. One thing I would like you to consider doing, not right now, but when you get home, maybe put it next to the bed, on the bedside tables, maybe open this document up and look at pages five through 13. And the document I'm talking about is one that says the Coweta County Board of Education Annual Financial Report. That document that I'm talking about, inside those pages five to 13, is what's called the Management Discussion and Analysis. That is written by your management team to share with you and all interested parties as to the good, the bad, the ugly, about why things went up, why things might have gone down. I think if I was in your shoes, it's one of those parts of this audit I would read. It'll give you a good summation of what we have in front of us and what we've just been through. When looking at the big picture of all the numbers, you're a large school system, if you didn't know that already. You're pretty good size. When you look at all the funds that you've got and all the activities, you have about $665 million worth of assets, okay? That is not all cash, okay? That is your infrastructure, your fleets, your everything. You add it all up. You do have about $140 million worth of cash and investments included in that, which is a pretty good place to be when you've got all the different things you've got going on. You do have liabilities against that amount of about $473 million, giving you an equity position of about $192 million. If you didn't have the state that transferred responsibilities for your post-employment benefits and your retirement, your equity actually would go up by another $333 million. That's the effect when you look at what they did to you all seven, eight, nine years ago and they pushed that to the local level. It's cost your equity about $330 million. So that's included in here and you still have a very good positive equity position. There are some school districts that have a negative equity position because of that liability that was put upon them a few years ago. So you all are in a good place. When you look again at everything, general fund, capital products fund, and all activities, your revenues this past year are about $357 million. You also spent about $266 million as expensed, okay? You've also spent other amounts, like on capital outlay, over $30 million. You also had to deal with some debt issues regarding your pension plan of another $25 million. So that bottom line that you had is needed because there's other things that don't get deducted, don't get included in that number when you look at it from that big picture. When you look at the general fund, I think that's the heart and soul, of course, of any governmental unit such as which we have here. I think your general fund's in a good place right now. You've got assets of about $82 million that are in the general fund. Some of that is cash, some of that is receivables that are due from the state, those kind of things. But you end up having a fund balance of about $47 million, which is a good place to be. That represents about 17% of your annual expenditures. And I think that's, again, a great place to be. You're June 30, you're in. We've got to be able to get through those months of the fall before property taxes start coming in. So 17%, it's right at the threshold of where the state wants you to be as a school district. So I think you're in a good place there. Another thing I'd like to just mention is when you look at the general fund's activities, you look at the revenues and expenditures, you all actually had less revenues that you actually received than originally budgeted by about $24 million. However, you also ended up spending less. You spent about $33 million less than what you'd budgeted. So what that says to me is, is that you all had some plans. You noted that the revenues were not going to always be there and there's things that we can't control. And I think that's fair here, but you also pulled in your belt strap and made sure you didn't spend money you didn't have either. So that was a good thing to see the offset of those two budget variances. Another thing that I'll conclude with is, as a school district, every school district gets federal money. Sometimes it comes directly through the state, but it's still considered federal monies. And you all took in about $46 million worth of federal-provided funds from all these Title Ones and Title Twos and COVID and everything else, about $46 million. We tested your three major programs. There were three of them. One of them was COVID. One of them was your Education Stabilization Fund and another one was your Title One. We looked at those three major programs that added up to about $25 million of that 46. And we tested for your compliance with all the federal laws and regulations and the state as well. And we found no issues, which is a very good thing. And this is where we live in, that's a constantly changing set of rules, it seems like, if you're trying to work with the federal government on such projects as COVID and things like that. So I think, again, all in all, I think your audit went incredibly well. I think you're in a great place, a great position, and that's pretty much what I wanted to share with you today. So if you've got any questions, I'll certainly entertain attempting to answer them.
Miller, thank you for coming.
Yes.
I've said it in here before, I'll take the opportunity to make sure that I brag on
You should.
Mr. Chapman, Mr. Latimer, their team. They, starts here, board sets the expectation throughout the system related to matters of money.
Yep.
And that expectation is that there will be no findings, that we will have a clean audit and that we will do right with the funds that we are entrusted with. Mr. Latimer, Mr. Chapman, and their people in finance take that charge and they take it incredibly seriously. And every year, when we get the audit back, I'm reminded of the great work that they do. And that expectation, that standard that they set, it filters out to the school level.
Yes, sir.
And doing things the right way with taxpayer funds is a shared expectation.
Yep.
And just commend them for their work. We'll note, you may have heard Mr. Chapman say that we were within $14,000 of budget six months into the year. That speaks to the level of detail and the good job that they do, not only with the money we're entrusted with, but projecting where we're going to be each year. So to you guys, make sure you relate to your folks. I appreciate you. I really do. Thank you, Miller.
Absolutely. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Kind of hard to follow that. Appreciate it. Budget calendar, we normally put out a tentative calendar this time of year, looking at similar as we've done in the prior years. Budget discussion, first budget workshop would be at the regular meeting in May. The following week, May 16th, would have our second budget workshop. We would look at a tentative adoption at the June 13th regular meeting and then a formal adoption two weeks later on June 27th. That would, that's what we would anticipate doing at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Appreciate it. We'll move on. Dr. Mark Guy will bring you your board goal report. Dr. Guy.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. The Coweta County School System offers numerous curriculum and instructional resources and support for students and schools. One such support originates through the ongoing efforts of our system-level content specialists. The school system has the following four content specialists. Dr. Paula Baker for English Language Arts, Ms. Kristen Harris for Mathematics, Dr. Philip Sykes for Social Studies, and Dr. Donald White in Science. Each specialist provides leadership and support to effectively plan and implement programs of instruction that ensure students and teachers' opportunities to reach their highest academic potential. Each specialist has a strong knowledge of curriculum content in their respective academic area and works to develop instructional strategies to effectively engage students. They collect, analyze, and disseminate data, model best practices in teaching, and they mentor teachers. Each content specialist works cooperatively with colleagues and helps provide leadership in the textbook adoption cycle. Attached, board members, is a data sheet denoting the number of visits to date that the content specialists have made to various schools at various levels. Total support across the entire district currently stands at 310 and will increase as each specialist continues to assist our students and teachers throughout the Coweta County School System.
Thank you, Dr. Guy. Our content specialists do a great, great job for us. And we, in our curriculum meetings that we have, you can see the schools that our content specialists have been in when you look at the achievement data in those schools. Nine times out of 10, if you see an uptick in a school, it's because they've been in there working really hard to help our teachers better reach their kids. So I commend the work that they're doing and the work of our entire curriculum staff. Last item I have for you, facilities and construction report. You can see Northgate is still on here, the renovations and modifications. We're closing that project out. Final closeout documents should be submitted later this month. And then the football lockers that you guys approved about this time last year, we're finishing up the install on those. Waiting closeout documents on the addition at Northgate as well. Fire alarm replacements at Smoky Road and CEC, those projects are complete. We have submitted the closeout documents on those. And then we're, we have fire alarm replacements that we're working on at Madras and Winston-Dowdell Academy. Rough ends are proceeding right now at Madras and then hopefully we'll be able to begin the work at WDA in a couple of months and try to have that project completed in April. Surveillance cameras that work has been going on throughout the system to get us all on to the same server, the digital watchdog surveillance system, and we're awaiting the final pay request and closeout documents on that project. Heard a little bit about Noonan High tonight. We were over there this afternoon. A ton of work going on over there. The gym is coming along. Masonry wall installation is proceeding. They're working on structural steel on the gym. Slated for a concrete pour, weather permitting on Thursday over there. And then, of course, BP3, what I call the academic buildings, they're working on grading as weather permits. We've talked a lot about dirt tonight that's moving across Armory Road there and then portions of the foundation walls. portions of the foundation walls on the lower level of the academic building have, have been poured, and we are currently right on schedule at noon and high. Last item on the list is you have board member disclosure and certification of compliance forms that Ms. Pat has left, left with you, just to sign and get them back to her at your convenience. Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. Okay, so at seven fifteen, we set aside forty-five minutes for public comment. First is Debbie Carroll. Alan Brady.
Happy New Year.
Good evening.
Welcome to your newest member, and congratulations on the new chairman and officers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I believe that your newest member has been attending these meetings for some time as an audience member, so I'm gonna assume that he's familiar with some of the topics raised and discussions that have gone on in the public comment sessions lately. In recent months, we've been treated to statements during these sessions by those who would appear to be some of our best and brightest local young people. That's great, especially the fact that they seem so confident and at ease with speaking up in public. I'm envious of how easy it appears to them, as it's very hard for me. I am saddened, however, at some of the things that they have said, especially quotations from the Bible taken out of context, with the implication that Bible believers want to put certain people to death because of their personal behaviors. I don't know about any of you, but as a Christian, my Lord and Savior, my God, is the one who instructed us to do unto others as you would have them do unto you, which is second only to love the Lord your God with all your heart and all your soul and all your mind and all your strength. He's the one who shamed those about to stone a woman to death and to back it off with, "Let he who is without sin cast the first stone." But he also told the woman, "Go and sin no more." That is the message of the Bible. I don't want anyone to suffer, be miserable, or be put to death, and I also don't want them to suffer now or in eternity because of their sins. And I certainly don't want anyone to be subject to what our Lord also said about those who would contribute to leading children astray. Better for you to have a millstone tied around your neck and be drowned in the sea. You have to understand, these straw man arguments we've heard lately are a symptom of an activist mentality that I believe is being facilitated and encouraged by some of what's being used and taught, whether explicitly or implicitly in our schools. Children are conditioned by a program whose tactics include making them question the wisdom of their parents or other influential adults in their lives. The first step in this program is often to gain their trust with conspiratorial actions, such as exposing them to explicit sexual content before they are mature enough to handle it. They know that their parents wouldn't knowingly approve, yet their curiosity gets the best of them, and off to the races they go. This is exactly what having sexually explicit material in our school media centers can and will do. As we've heard from the excerpts, this material isn't in any way romantic, is often degrading and violent, has no place in the hands of children, and should be removed or at least age-restricted. Yes, there is currently a lengthy and cumbersome process to try and accomplish this, but it's now been restricted such that many of those who are really the owners and customers of the school system, the citizen taxpayers of this county, can't have input or participate in the discussion about it other than petitioning to you, school board administration, through forums such as this. You have the authority to resolve this problem with a single directive. Say the word, and it will happen. You can, in fact, do something about it. Please don't continue to sit in silence and not act. Just after the stony incident I mentioned earlier, our Lord also said, "If you continue in my word, you shall be my disciples indeed, and you shall know the truth, and the truth shall make you free." I'm just after the truth, whatever it may be, and I want you to be also. We have talked a lot over the last few months about literature. Literary work has probably been the second most influential in my life, and certainly my favorite story from childhood is the Emperor's New Clothes. I loved that story as a kid since I was always the one who pointed out things like, "But he doesn't have any clothes on," to the embarrassments of the adults in the room. Now I'm an old man, but I still feel compelled to point things out when I see them. I see this stuff happening, I know it's bad, and I have to say something about it and continue to say something about it until something is done. Thank you for your time and attention.
Are there any further public comments? Are there any board comments?
I have a board comment. First of all, I'd like to say to Beth Barnett, thank you for your leadership over the last two years. I think her grace and wisdom has done this board well, and only she can accomplish that. Some of us are not as graceful, so I appreciate that, Beth. I appreciate so much. And I want to thank the constituents of District One. This is my thirteenth year going into service to swear in to serve students in Coweta County, and without that support, I wouldn't be sitting in this seat. And I believe in public education, and I love our public school students. And it's been my privilege to serve in this seat, and I thank you for allowing me to do that for four more years. I've also, not always sat by Dr. Guy with his UGA tie on, but tonight, I get to sit by the national championship ring from the UGA game, and I am told, this has been my friend, I'm told there may be another one on next year's hand. So congratulations to the University of Georgia.
Chairman, I've got a quick comment, too. Ms. Barnett, I also want to add my thanks. I, my past two years, the first two years, or the two years that you served as, as chair, and thank you so much for the guidance, the wisdom, the leadership, and, and what's, at times been a couple, you know, active a couple of years, I guess, and we really appreciate your, your steady leadership during this time, and I, I appreciate it greatly, and it has certainly made me a better board, board member. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Dr. Horton and Mr. Ronnie Cheek and Mr. Walter Drake and all the people that work in the maintenance department. It had something to do with getting our schools cleaned up and ready for the new year after all the water leaks we had, and it was, it's amazing what y'all do, and it doesn't go unnoticed. And I know everybody up here appreciates, I just wanted to mention that. I also wanted to also thank Ms. Beth Barnett. I wouldn't have wanted to be in her seat the last two years. I know it's been very difficult, and you've done a great job, and we appreciate your service. I also want to thank Mr. Larry Robertson, Ms. Amy Dees, and Ms. Barnett, again, for running for this seat again. They didn't have to do it, and they did, and they did it for good reasons. They did it for the students of this school system in the county. They're true public servants. They believe in the Coweta County School System and public education, and it's a great night for Coweta County and the school system to also add Mr. Rob Dubose, who also shares those same qualities. And now we have a full board that truly supports and believes in public education, the Coweta County School System. Congratulations, and I look forward to working with y'all.
Yes, I'd also like to offer a word, or two, or three, of thanks to Ms. Barnett. The time that you spent on the board, it was, it was an ideal time to have someone with your calm demeanor and, and style to kind of keep us in track, and I appreciate what you did in your two years as board chair. And I know that it's, it's not always as easy as you make it look. I hope that I made it look somewhat easy, but I know sometimes it's, you're going about fifteen different directions without trying to keep it invisible to the general public. So I appreciate what you have done there. Appreciate Mr. Dubose from, congratulate him for stepping up and running on the board. Congratulations to Mr. Andrew Copeland. Andrew is probably the youngest board chair that we've had here in Coweta County. So, and that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean that he's not capable of doing an outstanding job, so I know he will. I appreciate Frank's positive comments, and, and like everyone else on this board, I'm a believer in public education. I'm a product of public education. My whole family is a product of Coweta County public education, so, and I am a servant at heart, will continue to be. So I appreciate the people of Coweta County electing me for another four-year term, and it's, it's a big district. It's a big district. Andrew and I were talking about that today, about how big it is and how much effort it takes to, to campaign in this county right here and putting signs in the ground, then having to go back out and pick them up. It's, it's not an easy task, and my wife is in the audience, and she was along with me on a lot of these Saturday and Sunday treks to put those signs in the ground. So thank you to everyone for your support and moving onward and upward.
I'll jump in real quick. I just want to take a minute and thank the voters in District Four for putting your confidence in me, and, you know, I'm really excited about this opportunity over the next four years to represent you and your students in, in our schools and see where we go from here. I know it's going to be up, so thank you.
I'm just gonna pile on for one second. Congrats to the new, to the returning members, and then again, Mr. Dubose. Beth, Ms. Barnett, I can't, I can't tell you enough how much I appreciate you. There's been many a day. Beth has talked me off the ledge, and so I agree with everyone's comments that, I mean, she really was exactly what this board needed during those two years. And then I thank the board for me, for you all letting, electing me board chair. Means a lot. Thank you. Are there any other board comments? Okay, is there a motion to approve to enter into executive session to, to discuss personnel, real estate, and a potential litigation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.